Meetings now called to work. Could you please stand for the invitation, please? As we gather this evening, we want to pledge our debt, all the good spirits in this room. We ask that, Lord, that you guide us, the decision-making process, and to give and remove us, and let us be about the citizens of Tropeville. These are all blessings we ask, and your justice may just stay back. But we stand for the pious regions. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This man is ready to please go to walk.
Councilmember Gales? Here. Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Clark? Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Finley is out of town for work and unable to attend tonight's meeting. Therefore, she respectfully requests the excuselessness.
That does make sense.
Councilmember Bond?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Mayor Page?
Yes, here.
Karen, could you please read the caption before exiting the session?
Madam Mayor, we did a motion to approve the agenda prior to that.
Absolutely right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move. I'm second.
Roll call this.
Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bond?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Now, Karen, could you please read S R twenty-one dash zero before exiting the session?
The Tropeville City Council will move into executive session pursuant to section one two one point two two G one of the Ohio Advice Code for the purpose of discussing a personnel matter, specifically the reappointment of a public employee, and pursuant to section one two one point two two G three of the Ohio Advice Code, which allows for discussion with an attorney for the public body concerning pending or imminent court action.
May I have a motion to approve the executive session? So move.
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Bond?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Please be adjourned to executive session.
You received any emails or questions yet? This is Captain Miss Bobbitt.
Hi. Excuse me.
She wanted to come and see how he changed around. I think he did what he wanted.
So word for word, yes, of course, yes.
Uh, he was still being... Okay. All the time. It's actually still the same time.
They covered it in the national.
Yeah. We, uh...
How are you? Great to see you.
I haven't seen you since my death. We should meet up.
Yeah, well, I'm saying...
I'm not actually...
I don't know about that. You guys have a little... Yeah, like, I know you guys...
Glad to hear it.
Maybe you should...
Sorry, was able to get back to here today. Well, we'll circle around on you. I get it. Tomorrow's...
Well, we'll... We'll want to chat.
Yep.
First.
So that's mine. Can I do maintenance on the side? I have many of them in volatiles, but he's not one of them.
Oh, no.
He can do anything.
So... What's the, uh... I think it's like, Richard Franklin, we did a lot of that. We corrected it. It's almost like us.
Well, he actually lives... So, um... So when I bought my father, there's the house there. She said, "There's something..." This guy Willie, this is all my son. It doesn't work well inside. He passed it a year or so. So, twenty years, first year, computers were used. We took the son's... We had a little pile. So we went down, had lunch. Part of it came down. All of them. One of the people that asked him, "Are?" And he said, "Um, the... My mom's for sure." He lost. So he... He is just like... Moved in two weeks. And essentially, taxes and insurance, plus a theoretical number after his labor, is backed out of the... So essentially, I'll get taxes and insurance because I wouldn't sell it. Because I had neighbor issues in the past, so I would not... So they essentially have a lease that runs like a life estate. But it can't be out once. Taxes and insurance was. My rental property gets on to the last. Not that he has to do it for free, but people with that skill set have more work. So it's like, okay, the catch is... It's like, what the fuck?
Okay, I asked for four, you offered two. Can we compromise? By the way, it's right there. Yeah, there's... I'm not torn to... Okay, so one on the right, if you want to speak. And then there's one just aside. I did both of them.
We're just pointing at you. We're not talking about you. She's in the car before I even leave. It's not a party. I have to... I have her GPS. I have to give her directions. She can't walk from there. I can't hear her. It's a note person.
She just walked by.
Okay.
There normally were two applications. I was just surprised.
Oh, you know? Who took every minute? What's that?
Oh, okay.
Fine. Fine people. Have you already spent? Have you already spent money? I was surprised that when I saw you at the launch. I think we're editing. It makes sense that you don't understand. We'll have to chat. No. Those people on the down, they're not too many. You know, I got them too. It's against so much for the poor kids. We can rave about the show. We mustn't spend time with all our poor kids. Get the next... Get the next... I have a side view. See here, I expect it. I've been to that now before. First name. One place in my... They said to be built for cheaper housing. Now that site, seven of the... Eighty foot, five hundred thousand dollar... Oh, that boy, four hundred thousand dollar house. I guess we can... Well, we need to... We can take like now.
She's all like this.
Oh, it does pay clearly. But I have to admit, I think the son is... The son, he wasn't there. But it's like, okay.
Yeah, I've already told you about it.
I can order as soon as I get done with the presentation. I can... I hope this is a question. And then I can... I can pick up a... Thanks, sir. Congratulations. I can eat large.
Thank you. So my... A lot of house. There's a lot of...
I feel like in the morning. Four or five pieces might get out slow. Bruce, so girl. First, it's Texas.
I mean, they're... They're still looking at places here. For shaking that. That would be great. On Sunday night. I don't want to take trouble off here. I want to get my check before it's... It's nice to meet you.
Standing. Well, I'm gonna take your money off the table. Although I made it earlier. So I'll... I'm thirty-four this day. Just my wife. There's certainly plenty.
Well, I know that...
And I said, this is a compromise. I said, "I will rise." I said... Can you see you?
You are not ready to talk. No, you shouldn't. We didn't want that conversation coming up.
The worst part of this is Adam and I went to both of them. Yeah, we don't know why.
I almost get out of my seat. He'll stop. He'll stop.
It was like.
Sound like an answer.
The whole reason.
So then one child there.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. That part worked.
And so I would have now. We were first three years. We were having pockets. Uh. And she hasn't done.
Well.
So.
We can't. I'm like.
You're from back from. We have 35 minutes. Getting these extractions. That was twice. We started that down before. Stop, stop, stop. How are you?
That's what they say. Well, that's what, that's what they say. Theory has happened many times to everyone. They have a certain period of time to make decisions. They say, well, we have major decision. It's not. If it's. That's easier for you than what the beat. There. There's a little. A little. Okay. Please don't. Don't be a wreck. Pretty men down. Of course. Now. Actually, I want to spread. Right now. That doesn't mean the board is standing. So yes. So, next morning, welcome.
I remember. I'm sure you want to.
We have a motion to adjourn the executive session. Right now, there is a motion on the floor to adjourn the executive session.
Captain Leonard on.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Gales.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Mayor Page.
Yes.
If there are any public comments. To comment on a topic not scheduled for a public hearing. You are asked to fill out a speaker form and return it to the clerk of council before the start of the meeting. When called upon. You will proceed to the microphone and state your name and address and proceed with your comments. And you will have remanded to speak. Just wanted to make that disclaimer. And now we're doing special presentations and recognition.
Mayor. I'm sorry, now the other dude has something to leave.
You do. That's how I guess.
We have Mr. Brian Moley, who is here to make a public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Moley.
Yes, good evening, very good, because I have a speech impediment. And basically, I live at 702 East Main Street. And basically, I would like to try to share with you all. That we need a maintenance man. That will do. Our general cleaning. At, at 702 East Main Street. And, uh. The, the, the reason why I say that we need a maintenance man that's going to do basically general cleaning. Is basically, I retired from involved now. Basically, that's not what we getting. Not the ones who just want to come out and just take the trash out. And when I say general cleaning, is mopping, sweeping and mobbing. And we also need, um. Say like a landlord. That is going to listen to the tenants. And basically, I'm not here to up and trying to get the one fired or anything like that. But actually just listen to the concerns, not complaints. You know, and if he or she need more training. That whoever she is up on the pivot. That they need to. They, they, they need to just go ahead and provide more training. But we also need to focus on the maintenance. And even though we're still in a corner. Or. We just don't need the tenants to catch the tigers, whatever Captain Trump is out there. One, because we have pets there. And, uh. We also have tenants that may have basis some underlying medical conditions. And basically, just like myself, I'm going on cancer free rate years. Who else may have some basis on underlying medical conditions? That's all I have to say. And I'm here for that blessing.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming forward. But you're saying 702 East Main Street. Uh, that's a Chol- Cholula senior law office. All right. That's what I wanted.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, and I, I'm praying for you. Thank you so much, and I'm glad that you're healthy.
Yes.
All right.
I thank really.
All right, thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, Julian Oreyden is here to say thank you to the Parks and Rec Department and Public Works Department.
What they need then?
Julian Oreyden, 14 Oaks Street in Cholula. And I just want to say thank you to, uh, specifically Public Works at Parks and Recs. They were in charge as well. There was a great cleanup made, uh, just north of the creek, north of Madison Park. And it cleared that whole area. You can see the creek now from that walkway. You can get down to the creek. I'm hoping that they keep it that way, but I just wanted to thank them. Because it just, it really, really looks nice and makes a big difference. Yeah. I also am pleased with the turnout tonight and encourage the people to come continually. To listen to what goes on here in Cholula. So that they have the true information to share with each other. Instead of the, the telephone information that changes as it goes from person to person. So, um, just want to share that with the public.
Well, we, thank you so much.
Uh huh.
And I appreciate you coming forward. I will tell Mr. McCuskey he did a great job. But the whole staff did also.
Yeah.
So we want to thank all of them and the city. Who manages all those people. Are there any more?
Madam Mayor, yes. Bernita Thomas is here to talk about the Cholula senior laws.
Good evening. My name is Bernita Thomas. Bernita Thomas, I'm here to basically talk to the developers that you're reviewing the senior law. Will most family dollars. And we over here at Cholula Senior Law is being ran by the tenants. We have no supervision, no management. Uh, all kind of contractual problems with the building to go on next year. And now we're in front of two more buildings like that coming? It's crazy. And we just out here holding a pivotal here. Because it needs, something needs to happen. You talking about building 112 more and less than 2,000 people? We won't be seeing maybe just over 500. From April. And it's sad. We need some help. We need management, some type of supervision, communications with the tenants. It's sad. The senior office running itself. Thank you. I hope I can talk to somebody to prepare those. Thank you.
Thank you, great time.
Madam Mayor, Fred Morgan is here to also speak about the Cholula senior laws.
Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about 702 East Main Street office. The management is terrible. You know, I, I'm had here. And the button that she puts on the door, it doesn't even work, you know, to open it by the. Doesn't work. And the phone doesn't work. I have to go down and do that, you know, my husband, the manager, and ask her. You know. You know, she gets nasty with me, you know. Uh. And she said, we're working on, well, they've been working on it for months now. Uh. So I just chuckled about that, you know. And, but they want that money at the first of the month, and I pay the high children. I didn't thought it, know that were, like, these are low income. I didn't know that. No one told me. But I'm paying 913 dollars, you know. So I'm saying, well, why? Well, put in, you want me to pay higher rent, government's low income. But I'm paying a higher rent. This isn't low income. It really doesn't matter. But people need to be treated right. And this is, uh, low income. And they probably don't care. Everybody don't care. You know, me and Moley, we emptied the trash, pushed out the dumpster. And emptied them all and worked out there. Because we got trash up in the building. That's where it's broken, sprat, rotus. Because we got trash up in the building, that's where it's broken, sprat, rotors. And the hair rail came off the wall on me, you know. And I had a totally problem. We're working on it. Well, you know, we have to wait on the, uh, they give you all kind of story, but we never had to talk to anyone else but that young lady that works in the office. And she doesn't care. And I, it's not, I'm saying, I just want things to get better, you know. Not work, get better, you know. And with that, I could go on and on, but, oh, they didn't even shovel the snow on the smoke, snowboard. They didn't put down salt. And then they say about, and then the trash? Well, oh, well, we do that three days a week. Well, my bitch, the trash was stacked this high this morning. What three days do you pick? You know what I mean? So with that, I'm gonna sit out because I had a really upset, and it hurts. Because it could be a beautiful thing. Beautiful, what you doing, well, this thing is great. No, but people, they don't care, they don't have to live here. But, and, and I would be living in a little, in a low income. But I didn't know, I probably want to move it out here, right, and nothing, and higher rent. But I'm here, and the people, you know, treat them, they just dump them because they're low income. Oh, well, you getting something for nothing anyway. So we not gonna do anything for, for them. But I'm gonna speak that, because I don't have, I can move the family.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Fred Morgan. Madam Mayor, our last public comment is from Anna Monfasak. She represents the Boy Scouts of America.
Like you said, my name is Anna Monfasak, and I'm here on behalf of Miami Valley Council, the Boy Scouts of America. And I really just wanted to introduce myself and get to know everybody. Um, because I, I, I work for the council, and I wanted growth scouting in the area. And Trotwood is definitely one of those communities that's really, it's really chinking around, and I think that scouting would be a wonderful benefit for just about everything civic, engagement, community service. There's so many opportunities. And so, the only thing that I would ask is help identifying those organizations that can help sponsor units. Uh, we do have one unit in Trotwood, but that's it. So there's so much more potential for growth, especially in Trotwood. So I'll be here for the meeting, and if anyone has anything, come, come find me, thank you.
Thank you so much, Anna. And thank you for coming to Trotwood. Are there any more public comments? Under special presentations and recognitions. Carol, could you read the caption?
PR 11-24, marketing coordinator Charles Wheeler is here to recognize the winners of the Black History Month Contest. Mayor Page will join Mr. Wheeler and present the winners with their award.
Come on down, Mr. Wheeler.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. We would like to take time to not only recognize the presenters that submitted pieces to the expression contest, but also give them an opportunity to present to you and everyone that's in the public here. So we're gonna start off with Miss Alanya Tolbert, if she can come down first, please, and present her piece.
Alanya, you have one?
She was the first line child to graduate and all went elementary school in the same room. Will be raised.
Thank you all for having me, Margaret.
Hello, people of Trotwood. I'd like to, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity today. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity today, and thank you for everything you have done for me. I'm greatly appreciated.
Can you show us everything to us?
Yeah.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, my artwork is about the, um, when, back in the day, when slaves were working in the fields, they had to pick cotton. And as we all know, cotton has thorns, so it would hurt, and it would, they weren't allowed to stop until the sun went down, they had to pull this cotton, which would make them bleed. So nowadays, you would think that cotton is the symbol of oppression. But as black, as the black Americans, we do not allow oppression to oppress us, we find beauty in it. So this is why this woman is holding a bouquet of cotton. She's able to take something that would normally seem such a bad thing in our history and turn it into something good.
Angel?
Hello, I'm Angel Carey. Um, I created this poem that we call "No Justice, No Peace." "No justice, no peace," we've all heard this saying. "No justice, no peace" is a call to action, a call of action for us to march and protest. This call of action is to let the higher power know that we're no longer satisfied with the idea of losing our mothers, fathers, sisters, and brothers and members of our kingdom. You may think that by disenfranchising, yes, you can silence our voices, but we will not be ignored. We will not let you rest until you treat us with respect and fairness that we deserve. We raise our voices so that you know that without justice, there can be no true peace. Sadly, some of our cries for help are met with violence and covered up by the badge you wear or the power you believe you have because of the suits you may wear. But we must continue to fight for what is right. We'll never truly have any justice if you only do me for the color of my skin. The system is flawed when you say that I fit the description because of the color of my skin. You give a white man a couple of years, yet he running into guns with, into stores with guns and killing anybody in sight, or going into school with us and shooting anybody he sees 'cause he's angry with his life, yet a black man can't even please self-defense without receiving a life sentence. For years, we have witnessed assistive killings of unarmed black men and women at the hands of law enforcement officers who are sworn to protect them. We have seen peaceful protesters met with violence by those entrusted with upholding justice. It's time for a change, it's time to hold people accountable. We try to protest like Martin Luther King, yet sometimes we must move like Michael Jackson, fight, fight, and fight. I'll be the first to kick it off. I'll be the voice to let you know that we're through. Let my voice bring you off your shell and give you the courage to speak up, 'cause in the end, there will be no justice without peace.
Mary?
Okay, um, thank you so much for this opportunity. Oh my goodness, okay. My poem is called "A Celebration of Black Artists." In a tapestry of colors, vibrant and bold, a celebration of stories and verses unfold. Black artists emerge as a beacon of grace. Their voices ring down, filling every space. Lysin Hughes sewing rhymes unheard, Maya Angelou uncaged the bird, and Toni Morrison's bluest eye. All of these writers bring life to words, poets pen verses with ink rich and deep. Lyrical mastery, emotions they seep. Patty McDaniel, beloved actress, singer, and songwriter. The first black person to win an Academy Award or Oscar. Edna James, when she sung "No One Could Turn a Blind Eye," you could not miss her star of shine. And you could not forget this Aretha Franklin, 18 Grammy wins, you better respect her. Harmony in melodies and rhythms that sway, black artists compose the symphony at play. Jean, Jean Michel Basquiat. The expressionists to seek, told tales of poverty and raised the art on the street. Horace Pippin, Harlem Hellfire, turned painter to address racial segregation and stress. And Dr. Margaret Taylor Burrows, artist, writer, and activist. Her work lives on in museum, museums, and young writers. In Ebony Hughes, a canvas unfolds, tales of resilience, courage, and passion foretold with brushes that paint they create, capturing essence transcending time. Celebrate the poets, painters, the singers, and the seers, the activists, architects, and daydream believers. The creators of dreams conquering fear, in a tapestry of life, their threads intertwine, a celebration of black artists forever divine.
Those young people did a fantastic job. I would like to mention that they're an age group, by the way, too. So Miss Alanya, she's in third grade, Danari is in seventh grade, eighth grade. Ava is in 10th grade, 11th grade, Angel's in 10th grade, and then Mary is in 11th grade as well. So these are our future, and they did a fantastic job.
I'm encouraged to ask all councilor to join me because we all share this. Get us a door, that's what we used to call it. Find a window, and everybody can see it, okay?
Go on, come through, I'm gonna take two. One, two, three. Thank you, everybody.
May we have another round? Alright, may I have another round of applause for one of the gentlemen? I've given them the performance twice, and they were excellent each time, so I just appreciate them being there. And then, let's also give a round of applause for their parents. Alright, Carol, Julie, uh, the caption, for PR 11.
Trotwood branch manager, Yumi Thompson, is here to provide an update with the Federal Library.
Madam Mayor, Council. Happy Women's History Month. We have a lot going on at the library this month, but tonight I wanted to highlight just a couple programs in particular. Uh, one is an ongoing program we call Homework Health. It's Monday through Thursday, 3 to 6 p.m. during the school year. We have friendly homework help assistants, many of them who are retired educators or college students. Uh, and they help guide students K through 12 in the right direction. Even if students don't have homework, you can bring your students to Homework Help that day. And we offer free STEAM activities, educational games, and reading help. Uh, so if they don't have homework, or they finish their homework early, we got something to do. Walking Girl is welcome, and that's Monday through Thursday, 3 to 6 p.m. during the school year. Another program I wanted to highlight is, we have a spring break program coming up called Youth Entrepreneurship Camp for Teens. This is gonna be during the spring break week, March 25th to 29th. It's presented in conjunction with a presentation called "Nellie's Future." Participants will learn the skills needed to become a successful entrepreneur from financial literacy to business planning. At the end of the camp, the participants will have a complete business and marketing plan and an understanding of the things needed to start and operate a small business. Registration is required, and space is limited. Uh, so let any future entrepreneurs that you know, uh, or teenagers, let them know about this full opportunity during spring break. And, uh, come on down to the library this March.
Now, the information that you just gave us, will that be provided for and put on our website?
Uh.
Or how are we gonna get the information? Because you read it to us tonight, you may forget that tomorrow. So I'm just, you know, I'm just being, you know, honest with you, so.
Yeah.
How, how can we get this information so to make sure that everybody, and you remind them these days?
Oh, it's a lot, um, it should be on the website soon, except the calendar shows. And, um, you can always check us out on the Federal Library, don't you?
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment?
You should make it.
You're very special. This is my 23rd year. And if I ever have seen someone represent the library here, it's been very, very frequently. You truly make this a community of libraries, so I want to personally thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Mayor, it's finally, we did provide this, we have the calendar, it's all packed. I was having trouble pulling it up, so we'll make sure it's on the website.
Um, I just wanted to ensure, I appreciate that. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? One second.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
May I have a motion, and now open for public, the open public's here.
Sir.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
And Carol, could you read the caption this time, so we agree to it in the next one.
For the public hearings, um, as far as people speaking, when instructed to be stand, to be, you'll stand to be sworn in by the mayor. When the mayor calls the ordinance you wish to speak there, you will step to the microphone, state your name and address, and proceed with your comments. Only comments relating to the specific ordinance are permissible. You will have three minutes to speak. If there is anyone here that wishes to speak during a public hearing, which I have several forms, please stand, and the mayor will administer a vote.
Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I will state your name. I will state your name.
I am Mr. Andrew.
Do someone swear?
Someone will swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will give?
I will give.
Statements that are true?
Statements that are true.
And correct?
And correct.
To the best of my knowledge?
To the best of my knowledge.
And believe?
And believe.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Thank you.
First ordinance is O R O one dash twenty-four. This is an ordinance by the Trawal City Council accepting the recommendation from the Trawal Planning Commission to approve an amendment to the official zoning map of the city and the classification of approximately nine point nine eight acres of land known as a one eight six six Shiloh Springs Road, parcel ID number H three three zero one six two zero 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 one, from business plan unit development to industrial plan unit development for the purpose of allowing design, build and light manufacturing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a chance to give you the classification of business industrial use of eighteen sixty-six Shiloh Springs Road. And planner has given, now just a couple more to comment here.
Good evening, Mayor Mayor, members of council. Thank you for hearing our cases for tonight. This first case is actually a change of zoning to allow one different user to occupy a building that has been in our community for a very long time. So many, many years ago, it was, I think, a grocery store that was, and then it was changed to a business use where they would bring in pieces of equipment and they would refurbish those pieces of equipment. When I went back and looked at the PUD that was created under the business category, what it told me was that this was really an industrial use, but because it was such a minimal impact, the council decided to classify this a business PUD. We now have new users because the old user is moving out and we have a new company that's coming in and display dynamics. I hope that you had an opportunity to go through the planning documents, to look at their website and look at the creative activity that they are planning to build in our community that really has national awareness. It is, however, industrial and I felt as the new planner that we should ask you if we could have your permission to rezone it for life industry. It will be contained entirely within the building that is there. There will be no outside storage of any kind, but it will allow reuse for what I think is really the proper classification. And so I hope you've had a chance to read my report and the planning commission report. They did approve unanimously and I would answer any questions that you might have. But I do think this company would be a great company for us and I think it will have no impact on the surrounding community.
Are there any questions from council?
Just a little question here. You mentioned that the building was a previous grocery store. Was it a lumberyard?
It might have been. I may have that wrong. I'm sorry. I'm not sure.
What if it was a former lumberyard?
Loveryard. I'm sorry.
Okay. I just wanted to be certain.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? All right. May I have a motion?
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Karen, did you read the next? Four, zero, two, twenty-four.
An ordinance by the Trawal City Council accepting the recommendations of the Trawal Planning Commission to approve a final plan unit development project one with conditions on approximately four point three two two acres of land. Parcel numbers H three three zero zero two one four zero zero one four and H three three zero zero two one four zero zero one five, partial, formerly known as parcel numbers H three three zero zero two one four zero 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 one and H three three zero zero two one four zero 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 two, for the proposed at main multifamily housing development with two three-story apartment buildings consisting of sixty-three apartment units with access from Main Street.
Yes, we're trying to use this to find a planning development for both multifamily housing development with two three-story apartment buildings on Main Street, the planning record company development.
Good evening again. There are just two events that I want to address that really pertain to the next three pieces of legislation. One of them is just a reminder that the city council approved a preliminary PUD plan, which you have in your packet, which shows exactly what the property was going to be used and that was back in two thousand and two. Second of all, the planning commission, when they were evaluating these three proposals, had talked about preparing a security plan. And each of you have provided the document that shows the analysis that was done on the lands in this area along Wolf Creek. I think that the Trawal Community Improvement Corporation did a really good job of analyzing it and reaching out to other project partners who have developments along the river. And if you look at the preliminary plan, the area down along the river was intended to be recreation in nature. So if you have any direct questions along the way for the security plan, I'd be happy to answer any of those. For the actual legislation, we have provided you with the staff report and all of the documents that the planning commission reviewed when they looked at this proposal. We also, at our public meeting last Monday, I gave you a list of all of the items that the city planning office looks at when they are evaluating a proposal. I will tell you that this proposal meets all of those criteria for the planning documents. And there were just a couple of variances that the planning commission thought were reasonable. One is building height from thirty-five to forty-one feet and a very small reduction in the unit sizes for one and two veteran units. I know you have a lot of information that you've been reading and thinking about, so perhaps if there's any questions that you have about this case, we have your answer and questions.
Are there any questions from council? Do we have anyone that wants to speak on this particular building?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is it missing in the information, in the notes from packet? But we had some pretty serious concerns and questions regarding Wolf Creek as a whole.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I'm not sure of what came out of that planning meeting and the information to mitigate some of those things.
So the suggestion from the group was that developers were going to install some additional security cameras that look out towards the creek. The creek is also very heavily vegetation along that line. It would be very difficult for anybody to even get through that vegetation. There are several larger drop offs and it's not likely that anybody is going to go back there. But I think the fact that the developers will install additional security and monitor that is going to be very helpful. And I hope they have a chance to read the plan because it was really well done. Yeah.
In the event that there was, I know the units are pet friendly and in the event that a pet ran through and a child or someone ran after their pet and for some uninitiated reason suffered an injury because of the drop, the twenty-foot drop in Wolf Creek, who would that move be responsible for that?
So it is private property. The city owns an easement along the creek itself because our sewer main runs through there. But it would fall upon the property owner for a liability claim. It's just that no one thinks that's possible because of the amount of vegetation that's there in that area.
When you say the property owner, which property?
The property owner that owns the area around the creek.
So it would be the developer on the same.
The developers will put in the security cameras to monitor any type of activity that goes on along that area. But then the property owner also is responsible. I'm going to defer maybe to legal, maybe you can answer that better than I can.
Yeah, I was just curious, and who is the property owner?
Oh, I don't know if it's in here or not. I don't remember her name, but I could look it up.
Thank you.
I will tell you that the TCIC met with the property owners and went over the security term with them and they were going to take some time and look at their property, which they had not actually walked back in that area, but they felt that there was a way that they could protect their own commercial site and be fine with the plan.
Did we have any public comments on this particular property? Do you have a question?
I believe Mr. Robert McCann is here, just to ask.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address council this evening. My name's Robert McCann. I'm the chief financial officer and principal of the Ober Companies. We're the developer of this particular housing community in partnership with County Corp. We're a locally based organization that takes great pride in the management of all our units. We manage about thirty-five hundred units, everything from Class B downward. We take great pride in the fact that you can't tell whether or not it is a poor hole community. We think that all residents have the right to be treated the same, whether or not they're paying their thirty percent rent in a Section A community or if they're paying two thousand dollars a month. But the fact is, is that housing is a big component of dignity and that we think folks should be treated accordingly. County Corp has been active in Trawal for more than thirty years. They worked diligently on the disaster recovery plan in helping with single family house renovation. They will be the long-term owner of the property and they'll be one of the co-developers. And I think that they've demonstrated a commitment to the community that is going to last. It's not like they're going to develop this housing and then go away and be absentee landlords. They're based in our community as our permits and we're here for the long term.
And Karen, you can go from the comments. We have a couple of comments on this particular one or one of the three.
There are several individuals that have wanted to speak about all three projects in general, so I can call them if you want. Karen Momi?
Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor and Council. My name is Karen Momi and I, my husband and I own some I C N two properties. We are, in fact, the owners that would be liable according to what was just said. So that's why I'm here and I did, I just found out about all of this in January because even though we bought the property in two thousand and twenty-two, the mailings were not getting to me. They were still going to the previous owner. The previous owner founded Wolf Creek Company in nineteen sixty-one. We have been there for sixty-three years on a property. My husband and I bought it. I'd worked for the company for eight years, but we decided she was ninety-five years old. We wanted to buy the property. We wanted to invest in Trawal. We felt like this was a place that was going to be great for our future. And then I found out about this in January and I sent an email to, I'm sorry, Debbie? I sent an email to Debbie and I outlined four basic concerns and they were serious. First was the safety of the children coming toward Wolf Creek. I have four children. I have my sixth grandchild due on Wednesday. I know how much children. I personally love water myself. They're drawn to the water. They don't know any different. Your comment about chasing a pet scared me just sitting there. I mean, we can all picture that. If a child goes off and we're somehow responsible, not to mention the child gets hurt or worse, that's not okay with me. So I came to the planning commission meeting. I started the meeting at home thinking I was safe because I had spoken to members and they tried to make me feel comfortable and I believed them. I shouldn't have. I ended up driving here in the fog to come and speak to that council to say the same thing. When I left, I was told there was going to be a collaboration, and that's the exact word, that included me. There was a collaboration, but it did not include me. So we had a meeting last week and I was presented with the results of that collaboration. And basically what I had asked for at the meeting, the planning committee meeting, was some type of barrier for the developers to pay for. Because for sixty-three years, our company has contributed income tax, payroll tax, property tax. We have no grants. My husband and I didn't get a grant to buy the property and we have to pay our property tax. We don't, it's not a dollar, right? What I heard a week ago was that they are not going to do a barrier, that they consulted with five brothers, Metro Park, and they don't do barriers. I understand that, I do. But I would think that if there's a twenty-foot drop off, they would do some type of barrier. They told me they were going to put in a hedgerow. I'm sorry, that's not enough. My ask for you tonight is I'm not against the developers, I'm not against progress, I'm not against building up Trawal at all, but I am against these apartments going in this location. This is a commercial area. This is not even residential area. It is not safe to put a hundred and ninety-four apartments in that space. And I should not be liable for the things that happen and I don't want those things to happen. It's not a monitored thing. It's a mother, a grandmother issue. It's a safety issue. And I'm sorry with that creek and I don't care what they tell you about the honeysuckle and to say that we didn't walk it, that's not true. Did we walk on the other side? That's not our property? No, we did not. But we walked. My husband has fished in the creek. He has walked all the way down the creek. We know the area, we know our area. I'm asking you to reconsider. Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Been a while since I've been in front of you. I want to take you back to a prior application for the same site back in roughly two thousand and nine, I remember. There was something to do with Food Town and some apartments and some single family homes on that site. And one of the things that staff came up with was a riverwalk concept. And this riverwalk would be on the north side, on the north bank of the creek, starting at the West Main Street Bridge and going all the way down to the Oliver Bridge. And the idea of the riverwalk was something that council and staff saw in a community north of Columbus when they were looking at solutions for the mall area. And this riverwalk just transformed that section of the Main Street area in that community. And this is what a last chance, if we want to try to create a riverwalk concept, this getting the right of way along the creek bank all the way through that quarter has to happen now before it's sewn up or it'll be close to that potential. For whatever reason, I don't know if the riverwalk concept needed into the long range land use plan, but it doesn't necessarily have to be in there to be something that we're thinking. but it doesn't necessarily have to be in there to be something that we're thinking about and how we're planning for the future of Main and Main and Main Street Quarter and how to make that area as successful as we can possibly make it. So I would like to think about maybe going back and looking at that Riverwalk concept. And it has some really cool merits to it. That it would be preserving a quarter on that north side, a right-of-way for the city would have owned property that the city would own that would go all the way from Bridge to Bridge to that stretch. That also included putting a footbridge across Wolf Creek where George Street turns out on Wolf Creek Drive on that side. So it was to make that whole area more viable, including the neighborhoods on the other side of Wolf Creek. So that, that's something I'd like to remember and think about and see if there's a way to incorporate.
Bev Perry is here to speak as well.
My name is Beverly Perry and I live at six twenty-one Coldridge Avenue. And I've been there for thirty-seven years. This is the first that I've heard about all of this, probably as many homeowners have. This is my first time hearing about this. And I think what concerns me the most as a homeowner is the value of our property. Bringing in one hundred and ninety-five projects will drop significantly because you'll have already, our property is dropping. But once you bring in one hundred and ninety-five units, I don't know how many people we get and how many bedrooms a unit houses, but what happens will be a multiplicity of different things that happen in projects, which caused me to pause in terms of what will our homes become once the projects come. And so is it any way that we, you guys can consider? And I said, we're all, most of us are black people that own these homes now. So we have all these white folks making plans for us. And we don't have, I can see one black person on this committee or talking about what the homeowners might want. There's been a feasibility study done in terms of what we might want. On my street, there's many things that need to be done. We have no one that represents us. Because I have called and tried on numerous times when a lady that died, several people have died on our street to get the lawn cut, to get the street paved. It's just multiplicity of things. So our property value then continues to go down. So if we already have in Trotwood some other units that people can occupy, why don't we use those units of first as opposed to bringing in builders to build a whole rapid project area around our homes? Our homes. We've lived here, most of the people on my street have lived there for years and years. And I've been on that street for thirty-seven years. But when the, when the projects come, what do you guys expect for us to do? Crime, violence, killing, murder? All of that stuff comes with that, that project. And so I'm just very concerned that we are going to be left holding homes and our children will be left with these homes that have no value. And we will never not be able to, we will have lived our life, I'm seventy-three. So we will have lived our life and we have no generational wealth to leave for our children because all these folk who we don't know and who don't look like us have made decisions for us. So as we try to build some generational wealth to leave for our children, I plead with you to please don't make it so difficult for us. We've lived here, we've paid our property tax, we've done what the city has asked us to do. Does not the city owe something to us? So I hope that you reconsider this entire project. Because I'm telling you, I don't believe that we all know about this project. These forms that she gave, those documents indicating what all the different specs and all that, the lady that came up, okay, yeah, Debbie. She presented a whole group of ideas and information. We don't have that. I haven't seen it. I don't know what it's going to look like. So I think we, the property owners, have a right to see what this project also is. I thank you very much and I hope that you reconsider this entire project.
Mr. Edward Perry is here to speak as well.
I don't want to be redundant. I'm Edward Perry and I live at six twenty-one Coldridge Avenue. As my wife stated, we have lived there for thirty-seven years. I see this as more rental property. And more rental property is not something that we need in Trotwood. We have apartments in different areas of the city. We have houses that people have bought for next to nothing and turned those into rental properties. Oftentimes, those properties are not kept very well. And yet we're talking about another low-income project being developed. I don't care what it looks like. It's being developed and it will further lessen our property values of our homes here. We need commercial things. We don't need a whole lot more people in Trotwood. We need to develop our commercial infrastructure to better the things that we can get without leaving the community. But this housing project is just something that seems to be out of order. And I have to, I thank you.
I believe that's the only one that I'm here. I do have a couple others, but they're specific to a different project.
They're not more specific to a different project, can I say this?
Right now, we're trying to talk, discuss this project here. And then once the project that you go on will call, you'll get, you'll get your chances given.
Oh, no hesitation?
On what have you signed up for? And if you, if it's one of the properties that are located on here that we're going to discuss, you'll be walled up at that time.
Yeah, I'm going to be there, just like Debbie's saying. I guess I have a new project to keep.
Sure, sure. I hear you, I'm here. And you're going to, and you're going to get your agreements, trust me, you are, okay? So right now, I have you. And we're on to here, so.
Mayor, questions from?
Are there any questions from council or discussion of council?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to table OR zero-two-two-four as presented at this time.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to table this particular item, OR zero-two-two-four, as presented.
A second then.
Discussion on the motion. Given the fact that the community appears to be uninformed about much of what's going on for whatever reason, be it the lack of information, because security concerns and those things have been brought forward, of which we've heard many more than is being presented here tonight alone. There's been several that have just been brought to our attention. I truly believe that I would request that we table it or that we reschedule this after a special meeting of council to collectively address all three, one hundred and ninety-four units collectively, to where we can look at things in that regard. And everything has been heard and said, this is a lot of information. A lot of things that I think we can't move forward with. So my request would be yes to your recommendation, but also that we do reschedule a special meeting prior to our next council meeting where we can come together and look at options and alternatives of which there may or may not be. But to make an informed decision for the community benefit collectively, I think we need to do that. So could we insert the new request that we have a special meeting, not just table or schedule, but that we have a special meeting with a specific purpose of this discussion, these three different developments?
Right now, that's discussion. Any other discussion on the motion that's on the floor? I have a motion on the floor. I'm sorry.
Uh, Mayor, I want to respond. So under the Trotwood Code, Section eleven forty point oh eight, council does have the ability to table. The code section indicates that if there, I'm just going to leave it. Under subsection J, following public comments, public hearing, city council may approve, disapprove, modify, and approve or table the application, table the application in order to request submission of additional information or documents from the applicant or city staff. Now, I think that there has been some requests for information that we heard from the speakers, and at least that's what I'm referring, council saying now, I think it would be helpful in the process if there was, if there were specific pieces of information that council wanted. For example, if there's some mention of maybe summary of the security plan presented to the planning commission last week or a history of the timeline, a number of citizens have said that they didn't receive notice and this project has been going on for a while. So in order to, I think, to comply with the spirit of the code section, I think to the extent that council has specific questions, that that should be part of the motion so that staff and or the applicant knows what they're being asked to do. Does that make sense?
There's a lot.
There is a lot.
There's a lot, right?
Well, and what I would say, Mayor, is that there's three projects here. They're related, interrelated, connected. And I think that it is impossible to get a summary document to kind of explain all of this in a broader sense, since it appears that council is, wants to, or at least is going to entertain a motion here at work pass. I think it needs some discussion behind that. So I might suggest that you vote on the motion to table and then consider another motion, what you might want to know more about or give some guidance as to what the next step is.
Um, Mayor, can I ask you one that comment? I do agree with you. However, until we have that special meeting, Mayor, giving the council an opportunity to look at the, I don't know, three hundred documents, sixty in the packet, you know, for each one, then that information can't be brought forward for the specifics of our concerns.
Well, you stated what the purpose is, that's what I was looking for.
Yes, then that's it. Thank you.
But also, we have a motion on the floor. Roberts rules, the motion is on the floor right now. And we need to...
The motion was moved by?
It's second, it's second, I'm in the mood of Roberts rules right now.
Yes, the motion was voted by Councilmember Moore, seconded by Vice Mayor Brown. And that was a motion to table. So, Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Now, it's obviously the council. And so is there anything specific that you want to add to that by way of another motion, what you're interested in? Or simply would you like summary documents? Would you like additional information on anything generally that you heard, the history of the, of these notices that went out to the public? Is there anything? I'm not suggesting what you need to do, I'm just suggesting to you that if there was anything of interest that any individual council member was wanting to know.
Would that include me too?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I'm about to ask you about.
Of course.
I like to be included.
I think that that would be the appropriate time to do that. If there's any...
Is there a motion?
Mayor, based on the idea to make a comment, please?
After.
Absolutely. All of the above. But specifically, we have an opportunity to draft something and send it in to the law director or the appropriate folks on those questions because there are questions that, in my opinion, and this is only speaking for myself, that have unintended consequences and I would like to be able to find those questions in a way that we can swiftly answer. So that we, you know, we can make an informed decision.
In addition to that, if I'm allowed, I'm one of the seven, is that right? I would like so, I would also like to include other public with us, that they're giving this information and that we're being very transparent from this point on so they would know exactly what's going on and that we'd be able to come to these needs also. If we could include that too. That way, nothing would be said about, you know, I don't know or anything like that. And now we're going to be transparent and letting everybody know. And I think that that would be fair. Would you not agree with that, Chris?
Well, certainly, that's part of the process that you require by law to act and provide proper transparencies. So that's consistent with the spirit of the law as, and I think it's the problem of...
We still have a motion, this is the second motion on the floor.
Discussion.
And discussion.
I have several issues that I don't know that they collectively represent all of city also members' concerns. But today, I think we mentioned, in fact, on property values, we mentioned security in the building, we mentioned Wolf Creek, we mentioned the water. Some houses are to the children that may come into that area as a result of this development, the management issues, which may or may not be as something to be discussed. Also, it hasn't even been mentioned, the seventy-five fifteen, seventy-five percent tax abatement for fifteen years, which has an impact on income for the schools as well as for the community and income for the city itself. So those are to add that. So those are to add that to one of the things that has to be important in this discussion, that is necessary.
Okay, good. So that should also be added. So now, what I need, are there any more discussion? Any council with this question? Okay, so what I need for you, uh, I need a motion on the floor to include additional information or course of what package to be brought forward, also, uh, to address property value, security, uh, water, and, uh, and the additional issues that may come, that may come upon us, in addition to also include the public in these proceedings for transparency. Thank you.
So make a motion for those things that were stated by the mayor.
I second. Second.
Vice mayor Brown?
Yes.
Council member Moore?
Yes.
Council member Gales?
Yes.
Council member Clark?
Yes.
Council member Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Should we capture R two three two four?
An ordinance by the Trumpwood City Council, accepting the recommendation from the Trumpwood Planning Commission to approve a final planned unit development, project two, with conditions on a grossing two point six eight eight acres of land, parcel number H three three zero zero two one four zero zero one six, formerly known as parcel number H three three zero zero two one four zero 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 two partial, for the proposed Jalen Lofts multi-family housing development with one story apartment building consisting of sixty-six apartment units.
City manager?
Yes, mayor, thank you, this is a final plan unit development, proposed multi-family, uh, development on Main Street, and the plan will come to your commentary.
Any other?
Um, I just want to state that the other documents that I submitted earlier, um, stand for this property as well. Uh, the planning commission did consider this. Um, this was a unanimous vote by the commission to approve this project with the following variances, the height of the building from thirty-five to forty-six feet, further a small reduction in the unit sizes for one and two bedrooms by eight percent, and a front yard setback from a hundred feet to five feet. Um, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, ma'am? Any discussion? This is the second one, R R zero three two four, this is in conjunction with, uh, R R two twenty-four, is that correct? This is one of the three units.
This is the second of the three units, yes. This is called the Jalen Lofts, it's on the northern end of Olive Street, on Monroeberry.
Mayor, my question would be. Any other? Yes, thank you. Any other motion?
Would be cooperative in being required to pass forward any public safety hazard issues to people, occupants and otherwise, to the safety department. To where you would be identified, here's a suggested list of these kinds of things. You know, broken stairway, a broken handrail, et cetera, et cetera. Those I consider, and obviously you could expand on those. Would you be willing to go by a list and require that those, that information is forwarded to our police department or our, our department? To where we can confirm that there is the correct measurement taken to eliminate or reduce those risks?
I'm certain our property management team does, doesn't have an issue bringing potential hazards to the ci- to the city. At the same time, any hazards that are brought to us, we are going to address and we're going to address it promptly. And I know that a few folks have expressed issues and I'm going to learn more about those tonight. I've already been on the phone with some of my regional staff to say, hey, hey, let's make sure we're addressing this what's outstanding. Um, so the, the, the instant we get to the workday tomorrow, we'll be working to make sure we're addressing this. And I commit to you that, um, however much we can, we will notify the city of any, um, concerns by the residents. The trick is, is where do you, I guess, limit that? I would say any, anytime we have, I think we have code issues, certainly we're going to bring it to the city. Um, and if we feel otherwise, we're going to try to address it without that. But, I mean, if that's something that helps gain comfort, uh, we're open to it. It's just how do we chronicle what is a, is merit to, to bring to the city or not? And I would say if this, if residents do think there are code issues, which I, you know, hope there are not, and we would remedy them, they were there, um, if we, if we know about them. Um, if there are code issues, I urge residents to bring those to the city. Because if we're not, and I promise you, we're going to try our best and we're going to do it as quick as we can. But if we're not, I certainly would say, well, my resident, look, if our property management staff doesn't get it, go to the city. But again, we want to address those things before they ever have to get to the city. And we're confident we can. We've got nine thousand units and, you know, from time to time, especially in today's environment, over Cisco, just getting those hires is slower than usual. What was a one-month hire can sometimes be a six-month or longer hire to find the right person. And so, um, you know, I hate to say, be patient with me, but we're working to get that staff up and, um, and I'm going to make sure and, and confident that they're doing a good job addressing those issues and will do a better job making sure we get very quick responses to residents.
My background has been public safety and pushfire, paramedic rescue as a commander. And I've experienced residential concerns in place, things being addressed, resolved and or not. I think we can break down, and you would agree, are the likelihood of those things that most commonly have happened in history with a large amount of complexes that you manage currently. But my concern is not that you address it, but in what timely manner are they? Because safety doesn't wait till a month. And so if someone's all absent, avoid to make an employee position, uh, then you've stepped out of what I sense is responsibility. So I want to make sure, and that's my personal, I believe council agrees, that you have a responsibility that goes beyond an employee and that is on a timely basis, at which we can discuss. Some things are instant. Fire, you know, paramedic, those things that will be challenged for our community, we meeting those residential needs, uh, and other things like no saw, no snowing, no stumbling over, uh, people who have disadvantages. Those things have got to be a part of what collectively makes it work for our community. Thank you.
Understood. And I hear, I hear you loudly clear, we're going to make sure we do a better job and for those residents, since I didn't get a chance to catch, catch you before, anybody who is a senior housing resident who wants to catch me outside and make sure we're, um, noting your issues and getting them addressed properly, please come see me. I'll make myself available and I'm sorry if you have delays and we'll make sure that gets addressed quickly and promptly as it should.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. Okay. Um, I'm not sure I know I ask this question, um, to better ask me, but are you pet friendly?
Pet friendly, yes we are. We do have some limitations. Um, I think it's, I'm thinking it's thirty-five or forty-five pounds, there's a weight limit. There are a few breed restrictions, but cats and most dogs and general other little pets are.
Well, my question speaks to a subset of the councilman Don's, um, concern or comments. Um, household maintenance, not just internally, but externally. So to accommodate those pets, what do you have in place? Anything like a pet walk? Do you have a pet park? Do you have something where as, you don't just have pets running everywhere through the complex and all of those things? Is there some sort of containment? Because pets are part of people's family as well. And given that, you know, we just want to make sure that there is, uh, we maintain the integrity of that, of the area.
Yeah.
And not just that, but the main street. You don't want to have dogs running down main street and things along those lines. And I'm glad you said there was a requirement, because that was my question.
Yeah. Well, it is a multi-story building and those, you know, with all the insulation in the world in it and those footsteps is, uh, can be tedious, so they go to some extent. Related to, um, dog walk or anything like that, we don't give it into design. Um, in the rear where the picnic areas and the playground areas, there is a decent amount of open space. As you kind of head west towards the gas line, um, there will be some open space there where, um, you know, certainly we're probably where people would let them do their thing. Um, you know, it's possible that we could add a small pet area, you know, just about, probably about the size of the playground area event, but for the dogs to kind of be let off the leashes and have a little ability to, to do their thing, um, that's not in the plans, but it's something I feel confident we could, could support if it was something that helped, you know, bring, bring this to fruition, so.
Maybe it would definitely be helpful.
Yeah.
Especially for people who are afraid of dogs.
Makes sense. Give them a safe place to stretch their legs for a minute, just like the kids, right?
But I, I would like to make a motion, Mayor, um, to table OR zero three two four as presented. Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Bond.
Yes.
Councilmember Gales.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Page.
Yes.
If I could make a suggestion, um, much like you did on the first ordinance, if there was anything specific that you would like to add on, so my suggestion would be that you have a second motion that would mirror the motion you did in the first. But if there were anything additionally you were interested in hearing based upon what you just heard, that you would add. But I don't think you need to go through the whole list. For purposes of the minutes, I'm confident in our part and.
Purpose of the minutes, if we could duplicate the, the standard and bar to that you before and add the, that information that was asked about the tech part, I think that was something in addition to what was the then at this time, other than the first time. Would I be correct in that assumption?
Yep, now, Mayor, um, and I believe I asked that question to the other developers and so that is across the board, not our just specific, you know, and as I know information or questions or concerns, I will include that. Thank you.
So we have a motion.
So.
Now, second.
Councilmember Bond.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Gales.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Page.
Yes.
Karen, would you please, we can capture our, more than that you before, an ordinance by the Travel City Council accepting the recommendation from the Travel Planning Commission to approve a final planned unit development, project three, with conditions on approximately four point two five eight acres of land, parcel number H three three zero zero two one four zero zero one seven, for proposed flats on Wolf Creek, multifamily housing development with one four-story apartment building consisting of sixty-five apartment units. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is a final plan development on proposed multifamily development. Good pleasure to come to you.
Good evening again. I think this is my agenda. Um, so this is the third of the three developments and, um, the variances on this one were the same as the second one, the one you just heard. It's thirty-five feet to forty-six feet, a small reduction in unit size for one and two bedrooms and a front yard setback from a hundred feet to five feet. Um, I know you have all the information, so I'll answer any questions you might have.
I have no questions, so. Any questions that we can have? Are there any further comments?
Yes, Mr. West Young is here to speak on this.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I don't have a lot of incremental information, but I do want to say that St. Mary is, uh, uh, West Young Executive Vice President from St. Mary Development. Um, we have been in, in the dating area since our beginning in nineteen eighty-nine, have been involved in thirty-six developments and two thousand five hundred fifty units. Now, uh, if it's going to be a day like today, what I would like to do is, or even a bad weather day, is if you have any interest in touring our properties to see what they look like, how they're being changed, um, how, how much resident care we give, this is a base-based not-for-profit, you know, we take great pride in that. And, uh, you know, I think that's a, you know, an intent, perhaps an intangible, if you will, but if, if you're a resident, it's not, you know, it's really something that we, that we concentrate on. So, uh, I would like to, you know, anyone that would like to do that, I'd be more than happy to arrange that. We can, uh, get a jeep or a bus, you know. And so, so, uh, that's really all, you know, the, obviously flats at Wolf Creek and Jalen Lofts structurally, except for one unit, it's virtually the same structure, the same amenities, the same concept of the shared entryway to cut down on the traffic, uh, you know, going in and out. And, uh, you know, we, you know, we look forward to, we, we know that, you know, Trapwood did lose eight hundred units in Trino and the funding from the state is, is specifically based on that event. And there was, you know, extra, I want to say, emphasis placed on, on funding to Trapwood for that. So that was about, uh, fourteen, fifteen million dollars that, between the three developments. So, uh, just wanted to point that out and, you know, we're, we're trying to, you know, meet any need that we perceive is here. So, all I have to say? Thank you.
I have a question. Excuse me. Excuse me.
I'm so sorry. Karen is the first to say.
Oh, you're the first one though.
Sorry. That was too quick.
You're fine. Um, I'd like to thank you for being here. I'd like to thank all the developers for coming in and, um, giving more information as needed. Um, one of the questions that I have, and it's already been stated, based on what you've heard, or citizens, and based on what I share as a concern with safety, uh, will create specifically, um, is there any consideration for addressing those things? May not be in the plans now, um, but just a question.
Well, um, we've been working, you know, with, with the planning commission and we proposed something to them, they accepted it. So we may need to go back and, you know, I don't want to just speak off, off the cuff because it, you know, it is, I know Ron is, I'm talking, is in that area. Uh, I think we need to go back and relook at that. You know, I, I, I'm trying to answer your question, but I think to answer the question better is let me think about it, let us think about it, put our heads together, work with Debbie, work with the planning commission and see if there's anything else that we can, can do, uh, to, uh, I, I know that there, I agree with the five rivers, uh, metro parks around the barrier. Um, I, I have young grandchildren and I, I would want them to be safe as well there. So it's, it's not, it's not that, it's just what's the best way to do it and, uh, and the most efficient way to do it. So, uh, that's certainly on the table and we can continue to take a look at it.
Yes, the second part of my question, sir, is, um, developers ever, uh, worked together? You guys are all pretty much adjacent to each other.
I am.
And that issue is not just an issue in, in one place, but all of those units got to back up to that creek and, um, that issue is pretty much homogenous. Um, and I don't know if there's ever a possibility of coming together as a collaborative and to.
Well, we're, we're actually already doing that, so.
Collaborative, yeah, and working together on this.
Our, one of our, Ober and Pimble are two of our key stakeholders that we work with all the time. They are for-profit developers, we're not-for-profit, but we work together a lot. Uh, with Pimble, we've worked on over fifty-five deals together. And so, in, in all, all different states and so forth, work with, with Ober a lot, um, as well, and have a lot of respect for both of those firms, uh, otherwise we wouldn't work with them so much. So, uh, we already are working together. We have the same contractor, the same architect on the two of the three. Uh, we have, uh, the same engineering for choice one for all three. So there's a lot of synergy, a lot of crossover, uh, on purpose, so.
That's good to know.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not out there, lone wolves and, and independent, independent, uh, but, you know, we work, we're working together.
Yeah, and that's good to know because, uh, given that, you know, we also think about these studies, like they're beautiful, um, the property specs look beautiful, but you know, it is important as well to address the safety issues that's concerned and, um, the property overall.
Yeah.
Prices. That's the thing that's very important.
You know, it's, it's just want to say, but we, as a, we get asked the question a lot and I'm, I'm not, not trying to disagree with some of the current residents, I understand their concern, but actually in affordable housing, we watch this a lot because we get asked this question a lot and we get, uh, it gets addressed a lot in meetings like this is that, um, these units are, um, close to three hundred thousand dollars per unit, cost per unit. Um, they're very well maintained, they're very well built. And the studies have shown in most cases that when affordable housing like this, not cinder block buildings, not, you know, rundown buildings, not old rental apartments, communities, older or, you know, single-family homes that are rentals, but the, the data shows that it actually helps the values of the properties around it. So, I, I, can I say that that happens a hundred percent of the time? I would not be, I, I wouldn't be able to say that, but we watch that very closely in our, in our data analysis and it, because we get asked that question. So with all due respect, that's, that's what we're, that's the data we're seeing. Um, you know, again, not disagreeing with anybody, luckily, I'm just saying that that's what we see on a more broad basis.
Mayor Page, I, I don't know if this is a city manager question or if it would be the children, but I think this is for clarification for, um, our citizens and even those that might not, um, differentiate between, you know, affordable housing, because I've heard a lot of different terms, you know, um, it, it can be clarified, you know, affordable housing, workforce housing.
Well, what, what we see happen typically in situations like this is you, you build a housing, workforce housing, this is one to come then to, to Trapwood because they know the workforce is here. Restaurants will want to, you know, if, if I had a hundred and ninety-four units, yeah, you know, and I was thinking about opening a restaurant, I'd open a restaurant pretty close by and you would, you would gather more, uh, you know, generate more commerce, you would generate more real estate taxes from that commerce, you'd generate more payroll taxes and so forth. I, I would imagine that that's what would happen. I, you know, we're, we're not, you know, we don't build commercial, uh, buildings, but, uh, you know, been around this business a long time and that's, you know, that's what we hope would happen, you know, because I know, I know, you, you all in chat are doing a, trying to do a, a great job in, in bringing, you know, more business. So, uh, that's what we hope will, you know, morph into, so.
So it's all of them? It's workforce housing, affordable housing and, you know, green food based house?
Right, and just, uh, just, you know, more, more of everything to, you know, to have more funds to, you know, this, this city just is on a trajectory like that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, I, I could ask Wes, just to ask a quick question.
You can start with the city.
I know, but, but you indicated that you had some data to show, uh, the infrastructure related to property values, would that be something that you could provide us then?
I'll, I'll check with our president, I think he has it, um, you know, okay, now thank you, okay.
And, uh, those are all of the registered individuals to speak on those particular ordinances.
I'm the veteran, I help the reading then. Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, my name is Karen O'Leary and I own the property at Wolf Creek Pike, sixty-five one Wolf Creek Pike. Um, I wanted to speak on these two because, uh, they are together. Um, I do have a concern, and it was one of them that I sent to Debbie about the Olive Street Road access point. Being there eight years, uh, I can tell you of all the accidents. I, one of the fun things I brought up, they said that they had, the engineers looked at it, they did the impact study and it was not dangerous enough to warrant a turning lane, any changes to road. I can tell you, like, being there, that's wrong. We have a bummer from a car that came through our fence and if you know us, we have huge steel pipe. That's not an easy fence to get through and to have, so we have our thinned pipe up front because of people coming in and crashing through our gate. We have, uh, on December sixth, I believe it was, my husband and I went to the office and, uh, there was a two-car accident right there at Olive and Wolf Creek. The car was T-boned so hard that the, the passenger front wheel was completely broken off the axle. It was sitting on top of the wrecker, Sandy's wrecker, with the entire fourth wheel gone. Uh, we've had a young lady, just one car accident on Wolf Creek Pike, she was going toward the, the light there. Um, she went off, she peered off and she died. It was right in front of our office there. Um, I can go on, there's a, there's, it happens a lot, you'd be surprised, um, regardless of what the impact study shows. So that's, that's an issue I have because of us owning that property, I feel like there's going to be an imminent domain that's going to happen down the road to widen that road because of what I'm telling you happens, and it will happen with another hundred and ninety-four apartments there and with two of those buildings coming out on two Olive Road. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is, um, the previous gentleman mentioned that there was collaboration and I'm going to tell you again, there was no collaboration with me and my husband. Our property doesn't just go through Wolf Creek, it comes up the other side of Wolf Creek. So to your point, we're responsible for any of the accidents that happen. We should be in this collaboration and they told us we would be. So I have a trust issue now and I have had since January. With all the other people that didn't even know were having issues with senior logs, I have more issues, more trust issues because of what I'm hearing tonight. Um, I, I just, I cannot stress enough that there needs to be a barrier. When they did talk to the fire department and the police department, they were told last week that there would not be a barrier because it would inhibit law enforcement from getting in to save someone. But yet we're responsible monetarily, emotionally, you know, strategically for whatever happens to our property, but yet we can't protect it, we can't put up a barrier, we can't ask them to put up a barrier. So what do we do? What choices do we have? A hedgerow isn't going to do it. It's not. The other thing they wanted to do that they discussed was, they said that our property is wetlands on the other side of the creek, of the, of Wolf Creek. So, um, we're going to go ahead and put in a walking trail. We're going to get with Great Rivers Metro Park and we're going to put in a walking trail. What do you think that's going to do to our property? That's going to encourage people to come to that water even more. They're going to come into our property. The company that owns, or the people that own the company where I work, we just put two hundred thousand dollars into a new roof in our Quanza building, you've probably seen it, it's a pretty unique building, two hundred thousand dollars. We didn't get a seventy-five percent grant, we didn't get a grant. But yet picture someone coming across there with a can of spray paint or a razor, not enough. Our money is gone. My husband and I did the trails, love the trails, five rivers, but when you go through the bridges and the underpasses, what do you see there? You never walked it or you never rode your bike, there's all kinds of spray paint on your feet. I love the trails, but it's going to happen and I can see it happening to our investment that we put in and you're right, we're white, but we love Trapwood. We love investing in this company, we love investing in this property and the people of Trapwood, or we wouldn't have put a million, two, of our own money into this property. I'm asking you to remember, we've been here sixty-three years, we would like for your respect as well. Thank you.
I, Council, um, now. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table OR zero four dash twenty-four as presented.
I have a second. Second.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Gales.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bond.
Yes.
Mayor Page.
Yes.
Mayor, did you want to make another motion?
I said, I was waiting, I was waiting for you to, you know, right in there. It was your time to.
They already think we all know the drill now.
They already know the drill. Can we do that for the second motion? To include everything that was in our, that's where that's twenty-two and twenty-three and now the twenty-four.
Yeah, including, um, an opportunity to consider a collaboration.
Yeah, that, that would be in addition, the collaboration that was just asked.
On the other end, it's possible. That motion on the floor.
So.
Sorry, council member made a motion.
Oh, wait a second. I think he's the initial one. Did she make the initial? Oh, um, I guess that motion would be initially to, um, again, utilize the information that we previously had in the other two ordinance, adding, um, a collaboration with the developers on that safety and security issue with Wolf Creek and collaborating with the local neighbors on if possible for some resolve. Also, um, this is the first time I've heard of a road issue and I don't know, um, if there's any questions that council might have concerning that, maybe city manager can, can I speak to you regarding this as a motion? But I just want to make sure the wording is right and.
Sure.
Sixth Street.
Well, yeah, the impact study and, uh, the police chief is looking at it and in terms of his evaluation was about the barriers, we heard there's not going to be any barrier. Uh, the only other things we possibly can do, they've already, engineers have already looked at, uh, the one thing that we, I don't believe that we do have, I'd be interested in asking the police chief to provide, you know, accidents that occurred in that intersection in there in the last few years.
Um, can you add that to the motion, attorney?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Gales.
Yes.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Bond.
Yes.
Mayor Page.
Yes.
Captain, would you say to me, Captain, call five people?
An ordinance by the Trapwood City Council repealing current section one one seven one point oh five, minimum lot area width of the Trapwood codes and ordinances and enacting new section one one seven one point oh five, minimum lot area width, correct the minimum lot area width for agricultural and single-family uses.
City Manager.
Yes, State Mayor, this is an ordinance that Wolf Creek also revealed, current section one one seven one point oh five, minimum lot area width of the Trapwood codes and ordinances and enacting new section one one seven one point oh five, minimum lot area width, correct the minimum lot area width for agricultural and single-family uses.
City Manager.
Yes, State Mayor, this is an ordinance that Wolf Creek also revealed, current section one one seven one point oh five, minimum lot area width of the Trapwood codes and ordinances and enacting new section one one seven one point oh five, minimum lot area width, correct the minimum lot area width for agricultural and single-family uses.
or code, minimum lot area and width, to correct the minimum lot area with the park and park and single-family uses. I need your discussion.
Hi, I'm back. Um, hopefully these next two are, uh, easy, uh, to get through. I have been getting a lot of questions from farmers who are looking to subdivide their properties and have residential lots within their farm. And the code eleven seventy-one oh five says that the minimum agriculture use shall have a minimum of five acres, but the single family shall have a minimum lot of twenty acres. That's backwards. So, um, both of these legislations, it talks about the, uh, width of the road that you have to have. Uh, one is three hundred feet, one is six hundred. Again, it was backwards, I'm asking the council just to correct this, and have the minimum residential lot be five acres with three hundred linear feet of road front, and a far be twenty acres with six hundred feet. And I'll answer any questions you have.
I have any questions, the council?
Uh, is this real property on farms, or is this building homes?
No, they're building single-family homes on them, but it didn't make sense to me to subdivide twenty acres when they really needed five for a residential home.
Okay, now, I'm gonna make it plain and simple.
Okay.
So you're saying, you're saying now, everything was switched, so from what you're telling me, it was five, it was five for six hundred and twenty for three hundred. Am I not right about that, or you're still saying something?
Yes.
So we're flipping, we're flipping that, so what we're gonna do is divide for three hundred and twenty for six hundred.
That is correct.
Now, does that allow them to build a house within that twenty acre for a house? Um, does that?
They can build a residential house on their farm, uh, but if they wanna split it and sell it for another single-family residential, then they need to split it into a five-acre lot. So for example, I have one applicant right now who has his own farm, his own house, uh, which was a farmhouse, and he wants to separate that out and have his own five acres and stay there, and then sell the rest of the farm.
And when he sells them, because he's a private owner, he can sell to anyone without, but they'll still have to go through planning and zoning and everything if they build a house.
They will have to do that, yes, but if they wanna continue the farm.
Without us knowing what's going, I know it's a.
Right.
Yet, I'm trying to get clarification and make everybody understand what I'm not understanding.
They have the right to separate their property, to subdivide. They can sub, and it's, it's usually just a one lot to two lot separation, is what I'm seeing. It's just that the code, and I try to abide by the code, that's my charge, and says, well, if you want a residential lot, you have ten twenty acres, well, that didn't make sense. Okay, you need five acres to, to create your residential area.
Yes, all right, just clarification, yes. Any other questions, now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Are there any existing property owners that would fall into the, those that have already been approved grandfather clothes?
So I will tell you that when the city annexed the township in, the township actually had one acre lots. But city council at the time said, we want you to have five acre lots for a single-family residential. So there are a lot of non-conforming uses in the farmlands, in the agricultural district, that only have one acres, but we would not allow them to create that in the future.
Okay, so going forward, this would be enacted, it is passed, but not going back and.
Correct.
In any way redressing those that are, that are currently.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, this is another question, and I knew you said it was gonna be easy, but right now, they stand as agricultural, is that correct?
That is right, it's in the agricultural district.
So when does it become residential, when they build a house or a tent or?
It does.
You understand, you, you see where I'm, right?
Yes, I do. So let me explain. You can have a, a single-family residential property is an allowable use in an agricultural district. So, but if you wanna create that, it can still say agriculture, but it's a single-family use, and that use will require five acres of land.
Okay, all right, just clarification and transparency, yes.
One more question, please. Knowing that there's a different tax, uh, resolution requirement for farm versus residential, industrial, etc., what impact will that have?
So that's a really great question. I don't know how the tax assessor assesses the residential property on a farm versus the farmable, the tillable, we call it the tillable land. The CAUV is applied to the tillable land, but I don't know how they separate that out. But it's a good question.
Yeah, because I know that we have occasionally people who are requesting that they have a reduced tax by the fact that they would be considered farmland, agricultural farmland, uh, and so would that be impacted by going forward with this change?
It will not, because whatever they're farming now, if they continue to farm it, and they have applied with the tax assessor for their CAUV value, that automatically reduces their taxable value.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was just gonna tweet you back on the answer as far as with the CAUV and residential, when they break it out and they do the new legal description, so you have the taxes for each parcel. So they will be calculated based on the metrics for the CAUV and then the metrics for residential.
Right, right, thank you very much.
Any other questions? I have a motion.
Uh, uh, that's a comment.
Uh, sorry.
I, yes, you can. I'm not already signed up to, to speak.
Did you sign up to speak for it?
I have to sign up to speak for anything in, in, in this, and that's all that's stated. Hello, council again. I'm so glad I was here when this came up. We spent two years with resident interviews, uh, ladies planning, uh, concepts with other communities and seeing what they were doing, looking across the state of Ohio at the problems that they were having with their, with zoning initiatives and things. And that's how we developed a long-range land use plan, I think it was dated in ninety-nine or two thousand, probably was. Ninety-nine. We talked to lots of people during that process, and one of the resounding things that we did here regarding agricultural was that people really liked the look and feel of the community, being an agricultural community. When you start allowing people to subdivide pieces of their farm and off, willy-nilly, let me just say, put that in there, what happens is, what has happened in lots of townships across the state, they, they, some, there's, there's a section on the road furniture. So they put a roadhouse along, along the road furniture, with their backyard and fences and, and house. Now you can't see the farmland behind it. So you've lost that appeal of, you know, the rural look and feel of the community. So we looked at some people, at some, some other communities, and what they had done, and we actually went at a lesser, lesser level than many of the townships went. They, they have currently zone forty acres, not twenty acres. So to put the twenty acres in use was, you know, we gave, we gave in a little bit there, but there's gotta be a better way to deal with people that wanna subdivide their, their homestead on, out of the farm, so that they can sell the farm and keep their homestead. I, I agree that's an issue, but blanket changing the zoning for the rural area, you're gonna have all sorts of unexpected consequences, so, so it will change the whole look of what we're, what we're looking at.
Yeah, I was just gonna say one thing, though, uh, regarding the nineteen ninety-nine conference plan, we're getting ready to do that, we're gonna relook at that now, we're gonna go through that process again, look at how we want this community to look here in the next ten, twenty years, so we're gonna be wanting to foster community, uh, engagement, uh, RFP and everything for the comprehensive land use.
Yeah, I, I think the twenty, the twenty acres, we should stick with it on the agricultural zoning and find a different solution for someone who wants to, uh, something like, they're one, they're whole lot off of their farm, so they can sell the farm and their lot. That, that's something I approve of.
There's not a way to do that.
That doesn't require us changing a blanket, uh, the blanket of, of that. It could be a, a variance process or something like that.
Madam mayor?
Just, just one second. Just give a quick comment.
I, I live, I live in a rural area, and the farmland around me, there's quite a bit of it. So I think for us to move forward with this change without having those affected in those investors, uh, both residential and agricultural, farmers, uh, would be looking in an uninformed perhaps way. So my suggestion would be that we table this, and that we ask for additional info that Mr. Cattell has provided, where we look at where we're at today and where we want to be tomorrow.
And this speaks to what Councilman Vaughn and Mr. Cattell just shared. I myself lived on a twenty-five acre farm here in Troutwood. Um, and we originally purchased the property, it was forty-five acres. And then again, with that code, we could sell off twenty acres and someone could build a house. But one of the things that I found most invest about farm communities, because that's what we want, was the landscape. And that is a big part of why folks want to live in those rural areas. It is absolutely gorgeous. Um, and I do believe, like Councilman Vaughn said, there needs to be some consideration for those, those folks that are out there in that community, because it is a community. And given that, I would have a link.
Yes.
Can I ask a question also? Was this a correction that we were, the?
Correction is change.
Well, the change, but it was, was it inadvertently the way that it is if we were correcting it?
That is correct.
Is that how it was presented?
So we're not updating a land use plan, we're not changing anything that was already in place, it's just a correction of how it was put in the code. It's only a correction. Even in the future, when we do our update plan, if you wanna consider different regulations for agricultural districts, that would be the time to do that, but this is just a correction.
So, but with that being said, if we do this correction, could anybody with a twenty-acre farm take ten acres of that and build a house on it? Would if we pass this?
So they could build a house, but they could not subdivide it. The issue here is the subdivision. So a farmer wants to subdivide off and, and sell it or keep it for himself, and then sell off the farm. Right, he has to have five acres, but it has to still have the twenty acres for the farm. We're not changing that. However, if he has twenty acres on farm, wants to build a house, he can certainly do that, but he cannot subdivide it.
So, yeah, we have another question. So it was not correct before, and now we're making a correction?
That's right.
Okay, was there any harm or foul before?
Well, like, I can only speak from what I'm getting for applications now, and it doesn't make sense to ask somebody to have, subdivide out twenty acres for a farm, for residential lot.
I'm just wondering how we came about, and that's why.
Because we're getting applications to subdivide.
How many applications?
So far, I've had three, but that was enough to say, wait a minute, we need to talk about the code. Thank you. You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? Uh, yes. Why did you want to? Uh, did you want to, I'm just watching, you, you made it?
I hope I'm not speaking with, as a person with limited capacity, but I do want to better understand what's existing and what changes are being made, and do we have to make those changes, uh, etc. So again, better information, workshop, or whatever may be required. I'm just asking for better understanding.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion. For better understanding, I mean, because we could do this, but then we could come back and, based on what you shared, city manager, undo it if we felt like it needed to be done. So can we get more information before moving forward to correct or undo something and then regulate? So my motion is to table this particular item OR zero five two four as presented, to bring back, to bring back to council, um, and the agenda was more understanding and clarification of what that looks like or what it means to the community.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second, woman, option?
Second?
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
None.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
That was just tabled. Caption, OR zero six two four?
Madam mayor, if I may ask one question, please.
Sure.
Well, Director, do we, do council do a motion similar in this instance to clarify the additional information they're looking for, as we did in the other ordinances? I just wanna be sure we have what we're looking for, so staff knows what they need to know about.
If you ask that, that question, uh, I think, you know, what I heard was that council's interested in the impact or effect on what exists and what the future might be.
So in response to that, I'm not really sure what the clarification would be. We have five acres, we have twenty acres. I don't know what further clarification that you would want. We're taking the twenty acres for a farm and making it twenty acres for a farm and five acres for residential lots. Right now, it says it's five acres for a farm and twenty acres for residential lot. So I'm really not sure what you're asking for.
They're connecting part of our special meeting so that there is a clear understanding of what we are asking for along the lines of what happens if we don't do this, opposed to if we do do this, I mean, other than, again, making a correction, and.
So if you don't do it, then you can have somebody subdivide a twenty-acre lot for a single-family home, and then you have a five-acre farm.
Close to a twenty-acre farm.
Correct, is that what you want to do?
So was it a mistake?
It is a mistake.
Okay, that's all I needed, I mean, I didn't know.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, but, but it was just a mistake. It was a mistake.
We don't want five-acre farms for all the reasons that you talked about, all the councilmembers. You like the vision of the farm, you like to see it being built and farmed, and, and you like all that. That's why the five acres means it's something less dense than a farm from the township. It was just an error.
Because you could have a lot of five-acre farms, is that what you're saying?
That's right, is that what you want, five-acre farms, because, but then you're gonna say, okay, I'm sorry, but we can't have your house because you don't have twenty acres, you have to put your house on.
The thing that, this is the beauty of all of us.
Uh-huh.
Because if we don't ask questions.
I understand.
And if we don't give the, the understanding that we need, then we just need more information. Now, there's already been a motion.
I understand.
It's already been a motion before, and approved that we tabled this, and, uh, right now. It's already been a motion before and approved that we tabled this. And right now, unless we do another motion to talk about this, where a special meeting could do that, but at this time, law as rule or is already, you know, it's already getting there, but we just have to table it.
And I understand. But the question is, do you want to do a separate motion to tell me what additional information you're looking for? Because I don't understand.
Uh, I, I mean, I think one of the issues with the end is still what Mr. Cattell brought forth, is the end result at the end of the day, allowing more, would this more than likely increase the number of residential houses and homes to obstruct the view and the area of the agricultural landscape we have currently?
And I would say no to that, because you still need six hundred linear feet of roadway to have a farm.
To have a farm.
Six hundred linear feet. So if you have to have nine hundred linear feet to subdivide, three hundred feet gets subdivided into the five acres, you still have the six hundred linear feet of roadway to view that farm and to see the agriculture that's going on. So they would not be able to take up a hundred percent of the roadways.
But again, asking and answering the question of will it, would it likely increase the number of residential homes in any size lot area, acreage, whatever, by allowing houses to be built not only twenty acres but on five acres?
Well, if, if, if they had enough acreage to maintain the twenty acre farm, they could subdivide, let's say they had a forty acre farm, and they subdivided three house lots off, they still have that six hundred linear feet of roadway and twenty acres left over.
So that would be a change as to what it is currently. And I think what I'm hearing logically is that yes, there will be more residents, more homes, permitted and likely to come to be. I mean, is that, I don't think it's an idea.
But they're permitted now. It's just, do you want a five acre lot and a twenty acre house? Because they're permitted now. You can do that.
But most people building a home, having a home of twenty acres, the cost of it will be increased. So as you decrease the lot size, the acres requirement, you would cause it to be more affordable, there'd more likely more up.
Is that okay? But, so the motion, yes, the motion, yes. So I just need to know what additional information you need, because it's a simple matter.
I, I might make a suggestion, which is sometimes not having a visual aid when you start talking about land use, I guess it's a little confusing.
Okay. What can you add?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, so what you're saying is the way the passage, ninety-nine or thirty-sixth pass was not written properly.
Correct.
It's a clarifier.
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
I agree.
And no, no, he even said that. He said, you know, we, we conceived it as twenty acres.
What can you submit?
Okay, you can submit. This is already, it's already.
Uh, here. Could you please, uh, read OR six two four?
Ten ordinance by the Trotwood City Council repealing current section one one seven one point oh six minimum lot shortage of the Trotwood municipal licenses and enacting new section one one seven one point oh six minimum lot shortage to correct the minimum lot shortage for agricultural and single family uses.
City manager?
Yes, yeah, just an order of laws to repeal section one one seven one oh six minimum lot shortage dealing with the agricultural and single family uses again. It's related to something.
So then legislation is in two sections of the code and that's why you have two different pieces of legislation to correct.
Just two pieces of legislation, but they go together.
Correct.
My suggestion is, if, you know, if we take one way and we don't have the other, maybe they should be presented together again at some point, once we get the maps and the visuals for better understanding and keep it all inclusive so that it makes sense.
Yeah.
So my motion to table OR zero six two four.
Do I have a second amendment?
Second.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
No.
Councilmember Porter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Caption twenty-four, batch one nine.
This public hearing is being held to hear the appeal filed by Mr. Christopher Sanders regarding the decision of the Trotwood Board of Zoning Appeals in case ZB dash two zero two three dash five, which pertains to a variance request from the minimum side yard setback on corner lot.
City manager, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I believe you have a, that appeal is about the city council, Mr. Christopher Sanders regarding a case that came before the, uh, board of zoning appeals. They, they did render a decision in there. He is not having that decision. He lives by this board and here it is. He's here and here it is, is, uh, is a problem issue with it. And I just have to talk.
Hi, my name is Debbie McDonald. Sorry, just trying to my clothes over the air. Um, this is an appeal application. I submitted memorandum to the city council, just sort of outlining the code. This gentleman lives on, um, on Free Pike and at the corner of Camelot. He lives on a corner lot. He has asked for a six foot privacy fence to be erected around his property. Our code states that six foot privacy fences may not be located in the front yard of any property. When you live on a corner, both the front yard and the yard on the opposing street is also considered a front yard. In this area, that setback is thirty feet. Front yard more than matches that, but he's not asking for a six foot privacy fence there. He wants it to go and be very close to his property line. But the code doesn't allow that. So if we're a thirty foot setback, it would actually, he only has twenty-two feet of setback now. So he would almost need an eight foot variance just to get from the thirty feet. The board listened to his argument, his, um, presentation. He has several young children, wanted to fence them in so that the children would have free rein in the backyard. Uh, but he did not understand why we would not allow him to put a six foot privacy fence close to the right of way. The BZA heard the case. The recommendation was that he be allowed to encroach in that side yard setback either ten to twelve feet. That would provide him with enough room to have, he has a side exit from his house. His children could exit there and be able to go and play in the backyard. And it would not negatively impact the line of sight that's created along the roadway, which is what you do not want to inhibit with a six foot fence. He is asking for seventeen feet rather than twelve, but that only leaves five feet between the right of way and his fence. Do we have to answer any questions? And I believe he's here to testify.
Mayor, I think so. I went out there myself, looked at that. It's a non-conforming use from the township and merged with the, uh, city of Trotwood. And there is, there is, would be a cyclical issue. It is a side yard. I drove it. You have a six foot fence there and you have other issues. If fence is wrecked. So I agree with what the board is owning, uh, board is owning fields, saying they did, they did give leeway there. They gave him twelve.
They did.
I think that's more than appropriate, you know, from a public sector perspective. I'm, I'm really glad and, and I hope that he understands.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Sanders?
Yes, Mr. Christopher Sanders is here to speak.
Mr. Sanders, you've been spoken to.
Hi, everybody. Uh, first of all, I want to say, uh, I'm happy to be here. Wasn't trying to encroach or intrude on, you know, the, of the panel's speaking. Uh, when I signed in, you know, she let me know she knew what my issue was, but I was standing as a speaker, so I thought I would be able to speak to the town hall for the whole meeting. So that's why, you know, I was listening to this lady here, just everything that was going on in the community. There was, there was a lot going on. You know what I mean? I heard these people speak. I'm part of the community. It was a lot going on. So I heard things that I kind of wanted to just say something about, but that's another issue. Um, I ain't gonna take a lot of time with that, but, uh, I'm a part of the community, so everything that was going on affects me too. So, but, um, uh, yeah, um, about my fence, um, it was said through zoning laws and codes that you couldn't do the fence, so I had to do a special variance. Uh, you want to see my five boys that I got from ages six to nine months, but I didn't feel like, you know, last time we came, no one was here but us and the panel. But when I saw a lot of people, I felt like it wasn't really a kid friendly situation. So I sent them to my mom's house in Trotwood. Um, anyway, you know, I had to go do a special variance just to even be heard about the issue that I had with fence. You know, when I came in here, special variance with my issues, safety concerns, you know, safety concerns. That's what I'm about, about the safety of my, my home and my family. Um, about my safety concerns, you know, the panel heard. This fence that you're not allowed to get through code was ultimately given to me because of what my issue was. Now, uh, when I first bought the home, um, I had a land surveyor come out and survey all the land, saw all the known exactly what was mine. Um, when they surveyed it, you know, because I'm building the house up, trying to make it look nice for the community. And, uh, you know, I, I saw a fit to think about putting a fence around my property because I want to be able to protect my kids from traffic, possible intruders, unwanted pets running the neighborhood or whatever. And from what I perceive is going on with the community, it's probably about to be an influx of people, traffic and everything coming as, you know, people coming from different places trying to build up in the community. And so, uh, that's why, that's one of the reasons why I sought right for my fence. Now, Mr. Pope here, he said he came past and he's looked at the area and everything. Where I want my fence to start at and go to, um, if you're coming from Denver, come down Free Pike and you want to turn right on Camelot, my fence sits at eighty-two plus feet. So if you're coming around that corner, my fence is not in the way. My fence is not in the way of traffic from the people coming from Camelot to Free Pike or from the people coming from Free Pike trying to turn around Camelot. Um, uh, I feel like it's an issue for me to be able to move my fence in to twelve feet where my property line comes out to twenty-two feet. And after that twenty-two feet, there's another twelve feet before the street. Now, the last time I was here at the meeting, like, it wasn't clearly stated to me as a, the reasons why. Um, um, because when we started talking about where I want my fence to be, they explained that maybe somebody in the neighborhood said something about possibly wanting to see the sidewalk continue on the side of my house, because there's no sidewalk right there. It kind of stops up in front of the neighbor's house that's kind of behind me. And, um, I mean, that house got built in nineteen fifty-seven. There's never been a sidewalk right there. So it was kind of like, okay, soon as I start talking about putting the fence up, now here we come talking about a sidewalk that's never been there since nineteen fifty-seven, seven some years, sixty-seven some years. It's just kind of like, I mean, that, you know, I'm, I'm asking for a fence and talking about something that ain't never happened in all these years. It was kind of like that. And so they went from saying, well, since somebody possibly want to see a sidewalk right here, if you, if we was to give it to you at twenty-two feet, which where your property line ain't, it would have to go back five more feet, which is seventeen feet to be able to have a sidewalk come through. I was cool with that, honestly. You know what I mean? Because I'm not opposed to a sidewalk. School buses, um, come right there, little kids get out. It would be good to see a sidewalk right there, even though it ain't been one in seventy years. You know what I mean? My kid will possibly be getting out right there, school bus right in front of my house is with. You know what I mean? So it was just kind of like, all right, man. Um, next thing you know, we jumped out with twelve feet. And I'm like, how do you know from twenty-two to seventeen to twelve feet? When to me, if because this corner house, um, the side of the house is being the front of the house, which no property owner would probably know that unless they came into a situation like this, that I would have never thought the side of my house was considered the front. You know what I mean? Um, and, um, so it's like, man, like, well, fence my property in and still have ten feet of my property on the other side of the fence is sort of, it just don't make sense. And, and I'm saying this because, like I said, I have five boys. I plan to be in this community for the rest of my life, like these people. They got thirty-seven years in. My mom stayed here. They've been here for a long time for you. I was in Trotwood, Madison High School. I coached first grade at Trotwood basketball team. Right now, I, I plan on being here. Where my kids stay growing up, young men, they'll be me. You know what I mean? So as a property owner, I feel like I should be able to have all my property. You know, any, any property owner is going to want all of their property. You know what I mean? That's the only thing I'm going to be asking for. There's no obstruction to no type of views. I went and talked to my neighbor right behind me. That came up twelve. He's a radio personality on our current, uh, radio stations, our local radio station. And I asked him, would you be opposed to me having a fence? Do you feel like it's blocking in any type of way? I brought him into my house, showing upgrades and stuff I did. He had no problem. He said, this is your property. I'm a property owner as well. I understand what you want. Expand on your property. Now, bringing my property in to twelve feet and leaving me with ten feet of my property going upside of the fence, I feel like it, uh, it, it doesn't allow me to expand on my property. And what I've been planning is I won't be able to utilize it to complete use. I have five boys. I don't want to have to go to TJ Chunks and, uh, Chuck E. Cheese and, uh, get there. I don't want to have to go to these places outside and spend money. I want to be able to have my kids a decent birthday party in my backyard and just take away ten feet space. And, and I don't want to take up too much of your time. But also, I'm gonna need to ask where y'all come to see y'all being about, about giving me a shed in my backyard, because I'm gonna be able, I'm gonna have to take care of, of, I'm gonna have to take care of my landscape. I, I want my house to look nice there, so I'm gonna need, um, play up to my tools, my lawn mowers or whatever I need to, you know, have to take care of my property in this space. But on the far end of my property, where, where the, since I'm a corner house, on the far end where my neighbor sits and their fence sits, that's where my gas lines run. My gas line is running underground. So if I ask for a shed to be put on my property, I won't be able to put it on that side because I can't sit on the gas lines just in case that, um, um, center point need to come through. And like they said, even then, y'all, it still have to be somewhere, they said fifty feet away from the gas lines. But he's gonna, he's gonna email me and my wife, um, in a couple days just to let us know the exact number. But like, like I'm saying, we're taking away from my property. I'm property on, property taxes is just starting to, a hundred dollars I just want to pay for the whole year, a, a couple days back. Like I, me and my family, we live in Trotwood, we trying to be here. I'm just trying to use less out of my property. And I'm gonna be honest with you, being on Free Pike like I am, it's a busy street. Just a couple months back, I'm assumed this guy was a drunk driver. He ran up on my, uh, driveway. He abandoned his vehicle, left it there with, with weapons inside, all type of stuff. Like, this is what I'm subject to staying on a busy street like that. You know what I mean? And honestly, I'm gonna be honest, like, me being, not being able to get the fence the way I feel like I should get it, because I feel like this. I feel like, you know, it's seventy years and ain't never been a sidewalk right there. This is what they brought up the last time. If, if, I feel like I want to be able to get my fence, get my property line. It's still twelve feet to the street. If the city decides they want to come build a sidewalk right there, I happily tear it down and build it up some. You know what I mean? But it's like. But it's like, these, these aren't the issues they brought up to me. These aren't the issues they brought up and it's like, I don't understand them because they're taking me all the way in for something that ain't probably gonna never happen. I'm just being honest, like, there's no obstruction to the view. Like I said, my, my house and where the fence is going to be, it sits eighty-two feet away from the street. So anybody coming around that corner, they're easily able to see people walking, cars coming. It's not, it's not blocking, it's not obstructing nothing. And I, I want to stay here, but I, it's kind of hard first, we didn't even want to stay in my home if I can't even deal with my fence. It's taking away from the beauty of my home.
Alright, Mrs. Sanders, thank you so, thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council? Any questions for?
I'm not a homeowner, no.
Okay.
Did you, uh, file for a permit as they said it was okay?
Yeah, they, 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 that's what I'm saying, they, they said you couldn't do it per zoning code from what she, Ms. Debbie told me, I was able to file, uh, um, a variance. And so, I mean, it's like I'm saying, the fence that you can't do, they granted it to me on the variance. So it's like, if you could grant me this fence, I mean, why is our work being taken away from lifting my fence for, for a sidewalk that's never been there before? There is not, uh, there's not obstruction of no view, there's not.
And I understand what you're saying, but I'm a teacher, I really believe in rules.
No, they, they gave the fence, they just, they just took it from, um, from being from my property line all the way up to, uh, twelve feet. Now, I'm not trying to break no rules, I'm not trying to break no rules. I'm just saying that when they said, when we talked about what my property line was, and then they went from twenty-two to seventeen to twelve feet, it was about a sidewalk that's not there. I mean, that's probably not, never gonna be there. So I, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, I understand, what, what are we taking here?
So what we need to do, I, I'm listening to you, Mrs. Sanders, and I really appreciate you being here. And most of all, I appreciate you being a homeowner. Uh, what I'd like to do is get clarification because I, and, and Ms. McDonald, Debbie, if you could come back up, I want you, you know, if you could come and explain it, you know, and everything. I, I hear you wanting to, uh, and everything, so.
Because I mean, the only thing I'm saying is, because what she just got up here and said, what she just came up here and said, when she first came up here, something about, something that the code would never permit for me to have, that was never said, even at first. It was, it was something that was never said, so she's gonna come up here and say it again. That was never said then, that was never said then, so that's the part I'm just trying to understand. The whole part about not being able to let me get at the property line was all about sidewalk. It was nothing about nothing else but a sidewalk that's not there, that's probably never gonna be there. There was no other reasoning to say that my fence should come from, from all the way over from my property. There was no other reason, because if they would have, I probably would have still healed it, but I probably would have, they would have said, nah, I promise, but, you know, they gave up, there was reason. There was no good reason. And even when I did my deal, she told me, you don't think it was gonna go through anyway. So I learned that you're feeling like, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stand with it. But like I said, at the end of the day, it's like this, I have five boys, six and none. I want to be able to live in chocolate wood until it's my time to go, you know what I mean? And with that being said, I want to be able to do as much of my property as I can. Like I said, I got a whole other side of the gas lines and stuff under there, I can't put nothing over there. I can't have nothing. So eventually, with it already being short, I'm gonna put in my property on the other side of my fence. My backyard just gonna end up being empty.
Alright, okay, Mrs. Sanders, we heard you. Thank you so much, and we really appreciate you coming forward. Ms. McDonald, mad, I'm a good, thank you, sir.
Um, thank you, mayor, for the opportunity to clarify. Uh, when we talked with Mr. Sanders about the sidewalk, it was really about the right of way. So each road, as all of you weren't aware, has a right of way. And each property has a section of the, the section that the homeowner takes care of that's considered right of way. Our code does not allow anyone to put a six-foot privacy fence on the property line on a front yard. When we talked about the difference between his twenty-two foot option and the five foot that he discussed, we had discussed with him that you can put a fence up in the front yard, but it can only be three feet tall and it has to be fifty percent of visibility through it. But you can put it, but it has to be five feet from his property line, which is the right of way line. Frequently, you will see a sidewalk that is always put at the back of the right of way. It's an easy way for everyone to understand where the right of way lies. This area doesn't have a sidewalk, but we do have a designated right of way. He has twenty-two feet to work with. He didn't want to put the smaller fence at the five foot in, which is the seventeen feet. The BZA felt that the twelve foot was an allowable amount of encroachment to give him what he was looking for and also stay as close to the city code as possible. What he's requesting is a seventy-seven percent encroachment. So I just wanted to explain the difference between the twenty-two feet, the five feet, and that's where his seventeen foot line is, that's where he wants to put his privacy fence. But that's where he would put, put very good, are your fence, according to our code. I'll answer any other questions that you have.
Just a, a question. Were we to?
You, you never denied, come from, come from law, you were right in this law.
Were we to make an exception? What an impact going forward, if you may speculate, would this have on any other property owner that wanted to reduce the punishment, increase the height of their fence, three foot, which is allowed to six foot? All, all the things that we're looking at making as an exception today. In past practices, would we be held accountable or unlikely to be able to defend any other property owner that came up with the same request? If they were able to say, it's over here, if you let this happen, but you're not, the same situation? You understand what I'm asking?
I do, uh, and I think it's a really good question. If you are to grant this variance and let him put it on his property line at the five foot setback area, everyone else is gonna come and say, you did it for them, you need to do it for me. And so then we would be looking at coming to you and asking you for a code revision that allows six-foot fences. But it's gonna take away from the safety issue of being able to see down the road, down on both sides. And there's a reason, from a planning perspective, why that setback is set in place and it's throughout the whole city. Now, I will tell you that there are a couple places where those fences have been put, not on the property line, but closer to it than a twelve foot. They were not properly permitted, um, and they went up and, um, but they weren't permitted. So I can't be putting permits something that's not allowed by code. But if you do that, you will be setting the precedent for allowing that to happen. And then we will have pretty much wiped out our code as far as what the rules are. And there's no valid reason for not, we gave them twelve feet.
So, just for clarification, as I go, my, my, it's A, B, C today, it's a C word, clarification. We granted, uh, fence, is that correct? You're not telling him that he could not have no fence at all?
That's correct.
It just has to be three feet because of obstruction from traffic coming through there? So it's, it's not visible, I'm just trying to, you know?
Yes.
City manager, is that what you're trying to say, that you put out there, city manager?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna have to, he, he's wanting to put a six-foot.
Privacy fence.
On his property line. So that's where you have to cite business issues. I believe the code, it, the normal size would be thirty feet. Am I right there, maybe, out to the?
Yeah, the setback is thirty feet in that, in that area.
So he's got, so he's got twenty-two. So it's non-conformity because it was from the old township. So, and it's a side yard, it's a side yard, that's the problem, it's a side yard. See, most times your yard might not be thirty, a thirty, he's got a non-conformity issue there. So he's got a side yard and he's wanting to put a, uh, six-foot privacy fence. Sometimes he wants to do the, the, the three feet like it's over him and things like that, he probably be okay. Or he wants a six-foot privacy fence. So, like you said, like when people are coming down Free Pike, it is a busy road right there. So let me ask you this, so someone's coming up Camelot and they're traveling southbound and you say a police department or a heavy equipment vehicle is coming down there and they come out at an intersection, you got a problem?
How, it's, um, it's, it's, it's in a certain two feet from my house.
No, I'm talking about site distance.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's my business.
I know, I know, I can see a one-on-six foot fence on there, I'm sorry.
But see, that's my own side of my house, it's a, it's a hill, it's slant down. It's not, it's not flat, it's not flat where it's up. It's slant down, so I'm asking for a privacy fence, but if you're driving on Free Pike or wherever, you're gonna be able to see clear through my yard, over my fence.
Mrs. Sanders, we hear, we hear, we, we really.
I'm not even asking what's up.
The BZA granted them twelve, twelve-foot variance. So that he could put his fence twelve rather than seventeen all the way to the property line. They, they gave him twelve, okay.
I was just, I, I thought that they removed it all from what I'm understanding. Okay, are there any questions from council about this? Any other discussions, any other questions?
Quick question.
Yes.
Um, with the neighbors, so on the back of Camelot, ends and side being on, um, Free Pike. Each of those residents have privacy fence that are currently in the back.
The backyard, correct.
And there aren't any of the residents through Camelot, store mind, all around, none of those have front fencing. So the suggestion in regards to the seventeen feet, is that from the back door and then all the way to the backyard?
Yeah, the seventeen feet is from his property, his building, all the way towards the right of way.
Okay.
And I will tell you that the house right behind him is a twenty-four foot setback, so they're setback a little bit further.
And they have a chain six, six foot, correct?
In the back.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have a motion on the floor? There's no other discussion. Do I have a motion on the floor to, uh, affirm, reverse, or not, by the decision of the board of commissioners? I make a motion that reaffirm the decision of the committee commission.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, because this is an appeal. I would recommend that the emotion to affirm, uh, incorporate by reference the meeting minutes from the BZA along with the rationale and the staff report as part of that. The rat, in other words, the record, the packet, those pieces of that.
So actually, the motion on the floor is to affirm what was a recommendation coming from the BZA as tonight.
And adopting the record, uh, as presented today and the, uh, packet and the, the information that.
In effect, so understood, like, everybody understand that? Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
What's your ask? Do I have a motion to close the other hearings? So. I'll second.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Here, could you please tap for resolutions to be put in the history line?
Resolution by the traveling city council to enter into an employment agreement with the county, Pope Senior, to serve as city manager for a five-year term.
Well, I can't, I can't turn you now, so you can turn now. Now, motion right now. I'm ready to shuffle.
Second.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes, certainly, all the new businesses.
I'm glad there's no older new business to present, thank you.
Do we have any announcements? Alright. Councilmembers, you have your minutes. Councilwoman Gales, do you have anything to say?
I would like to thank all the members who came out, uh, citizens who came out tonight and to tell them that, uh, the council meetings are also on television and if you can't get out to hear the people watching on television or to keep informed about what's going on in the city. It was very surprising to hear that, uh, people had just heard of, uh, this situation and it's been going on for a minute. So, um, you know, I, I, it, it's just very important that all the citizens be keeping informed, uh, either out here or on television. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore? You're second, you're not first, you know I'm, you know I'm gonna go there then, alright.
Well, this has been one of the more informative meetings and I think we probably have a long, long time. I'm happy that there were so many people here, uh, interested in what's going on in the community and I hope that continues. Uh, and I'm thankful for the fact that investors, zoning, the city stamp, everyone in city council and board, everyone has in their heart the best interest of the community. Each of us sees something that's a bit different. Some are short of where we may need to be, I don't think any of us intend to do so. Uh, we just want to open our ears or eyes in our hearts to what other people think, see and feel. I think that is the description of a good public servant. And so I hope to meet that and I believe council all want to do the same. So I'm thankful for the council, for the consideration, the dialogue, the concern and the information that we're asking, thank you.
That's all. I'm here.
My sentiments from my colleagues, I agree, uh, most of all, what makes us a great city is our great citizens. The fact that you would take the time to come out, voice your opinions, and stay with us for three hours, that's huge. It means your city's important to you and that makes a difference in how we conduct business and travel. I just want to say thank you. Um, great dialogue, council, um, thank you. Um, also, uh, great direction from legal, appreciate that as well, thank you. And congratulations. Welcome, alright, let's give him a hand, alright? And that's it for you.
Well, I, I just want to ditto everything, um, my colleagues up here said. I also wanted to, um, say I'm very pleased with the, um, Black History Month that, you know, took place on, um, Saturday. Me and I, I went in, Mr. Miller for that, I think he's, he's had an excellent job. Um, that's, you know, and also, I understand he's responsible for all the posts for the Black History Month on, on our Facebook page or Word page. So, thank you again and thank the citizens for all coming out this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you, mayor. Um, of course, my sentiments are the same of each one of my colleagues. Um, and to emphasize in regards to the Black History Program, which was a great program on Saturday. And then the high school also had a program on Thursday, it was phenomenal. Um, Black History, not just in February, but for throughout the year. It's just, it was just a great, um, program. Um, I did have the opportunity to attend the OML seminar with, um, Mayor Page on Saturday, a refresher course. And a lot of the things that were, um, discussed that we learned and relearned, um, were emphasized in our meetings today. So it was great. So it was great, um, with the dialogue with the citizens, and so ecstatic that each one of you have stayed. Um, those of you that are still, um, on the video, it's just an exciting time for chocolate wood, and I'm just glad that our citizens are here to be a part of it. The other exciting news was, um, the news with the Sinclair, the chocolate Madison's EMT. Um, just to see the, um, the, the conversation that the students had as far as to be a part of that program, and to know that we have those resources available to them, hats off to our EMTs who are chief, um, and deputy. It's, it's just something exciting that's going on in our city, and I'm just glad that it's chocolate wood that has started in implement, thank you. See you next week.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I want to say that I love this community, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve, or continue to work hard, and thinking about that. Today was a great article in the Today Daily News regarding, uh, display dynamics moving in the city, chocolate into eighteen sixty-six, I was ranked, a million dollar investment. I tried to send it today, and I couldn't get it to send it, I do not send it, I couldn't get it to work today, but I'm very proud of that, because we're gonna continue moving forward, continue building our tax base, continue growing our research, commercial, industrial sectors, and, uh, that'll take care of us, thank you.
And I'm not gonna keep this long, because we've been here a long time, but I want to make this promise to all the citizens and the council, we are up here for a reason, and the one reason is not to abstain, but to be transparent, and to bring all the information to you. And it also brings all the information to us, so we can make a decision, because that's who we work for. We work for the twenty-three thousand seventy that live here, that's who we answer to. I want to congratulate city manager, I, I'm, I'm willing to work, work, work with you on whatever we need to do. Uh, my, our council here, we, we're, 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 we're getting along very well. And I wanna thank you for listening to every question that I've asked, and I couldn't think of a better group of ladies and gentlemen than I served up here on this D I S. Uh, I would be remiss not to tell you all thank you for the hard work that you put in, looking at three hundred pages in a, in a forty-hour, uh, time span, and trying to make a decision for twenty-three thousand seventy people. That's something to go through and everything, but we're here because of that, and we want to continue, we will continue, and we won't stop doing what we have to do for the citizens of chocolate wood. With that being said, the meeting is now adjourned.